You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to July 29, 2025, special called Winston-Salem for Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Miranda Merritt, and she entitled it "I Choose." And to me, this list represents the steps for success. We all need to choose. I choose. I choose to live by choice, not by chance, to make changes, not excuses, to be motivated, not manipulated, to be useful, not used, to excel, not compete. I choose self-esteem, not self-pity. I choose to listen to my inner voice, not the random opinion of others. We will now have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to return back into closed after our open meeting to discuss a legal and a personnel matter pursuant to the statutory provisions listed on the agenda? Do I have a motion?
So move second.
So have a motion by Board Member Barr and a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seat closest to the podium, state your name and the agenda item that you would like to speak on. The protocols that we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings. Pursuant to the District's Civility Policy 1170, the Board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. We cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak. If you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker tonight is Rhonda Mays.
Greetings, Chairwoman Kaplan. The Board and Superintendent Moore. I will speak briefly on two topics, the budget and the superintendent rubric. The dust is starting to settle and there are numerous questions that remain unanswered. Why is there an additional $4 million added to the deficit? Has the Board had the time to review the budget? And has the Board been provided with all information concerning the finances of the district in order to make appropriate decisions? What provisions are going to be in place to make certain all students' needs are met this coming school year? How will you support and value the educators located in the schools as well as those who are outside of the schools? In light of the reduction in force? These are just a few of the questions that continue to come up in different settings that I'm in, in the community. We are all, we can all agree that it was refreshing to have a superintendent who was involved in the community through various partnerships, present in schools, accessible to staff, collaborate with the Forsyth County Association of Educators. We need all of the above in the next individual who will be the superintendent, as well as a person who has knowledge and experience working with budgets. Experience with working with county commissioners, legislators, and others at the state level. These are all important characteristics and values and experiences. The Forsyth County community historically has supported this school district and wants to continue their support. They are asking for fidelity and transparency. Thank you for your time and your attention to these matters.
Thank you. Harry Morley?
Good evening, Chairman Kaplan, Superintendent Moore, I met you today, and the rest of your board members, you know me. I'm Harry Morley. I'm a current teacher at Spies Elementary. I'm a exceptional children's teacher. I'm a veteran teacher. I'm currently running for 10th Congressional U.S. House against Mr. Harrigan. I want to speak towards the budget and the letter. I want to encourage you guys, we need you to advocate. You guys are the bosses of the third largest employer in Forsyth County. We need you to advocate and send that letter up to Amber Baker, Paul Lo, Diane Lambeth, Kyle Hall, Jeff Segler, Danica Jones, and Paul and Kanika Brown. And let them know that you want them to support you and ask what you need to support our employees, our kids, and our teachers, and our maintenance workers, and our bus drivers. This is important. Now, on the federal level, you need to go and advocate to Mr. Harrigan, who I'm running against, because you're missing like 5.5 million dollars from the Federal Department of Education and that $269 million they aren't giving to the state of North Carolina. And the smaller rural districts can't do without it. I've been to Ardell County, Catawba County, Lincoln County, all over Forsyth. And I've heard people, and they just want you guys to lead and lead the way and ask what you want to. I've seen you at the county commissioners. I've been with a lot of you guys all over the places. I've worked for Mr. Watts at one point. It's time. We need to step up and just advocate for us. Please do that, because a lot of people, a lot of kids are depending on it. And the federal money covers Title I, ESL, and parts of exceptional children's. And I've spent like 38 years now, including three years of wilderness camp, advocating and teaching these people on the margins of society. Board Member Crowley knows, she saw me at Wally's, I used to be there. But I'm still here, because I'm here for all of us. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Raven Richardson?
Robin Richardson.
Excuse me.
It's a pleasure to be here.
You look like an A.
Yeah, I'm getting old. My writing is not so good. But I'm here to speak on the budget. I became a little confused when I was reading the information. And one thing I heard, I kept hearing is that you were considering closing more schools. And I got to thinking, and I was wondering how would you come up with the criteria to determine which schools would close if you actually took that avenue? I know it's Hanes Lawrence, for example, it's been closed 10 years and it's still vacant. And I was reading where they said that you may have some type of technology going into the building to get some use out of it. But I was always taught in finance that a structure, building, a house had some type of liquid asset. But I would imagine in the school system that that cannot be the case. I guess you can't sell a school. I guess nobody wants to rent a school. But what really bothers me more than anything else, that if you close a school, then please don't close another school in a predominantly black neighborhood. I don't know what kind of criteria you're going to come up with. But I'm praying that you never close another school in the black neighborhood, because it's enough urban blight within the inner city. You know, a vacant building, you know, encourages things in the neighborhood that you don't want to see. So if, I don't know, you have projections to build Brunson for Apple. So I would imagine if you took that avenue, that Brunson would definitely be one of the closed schools. But when you close, if and when you close Brunson, then how long will it be empty? What are you going to use it for? And to balance a budget, I can't see closing another structure if you have one that's already closed, that's been vacant for 10 years this past March. So I'm praying that you, as a group of individuals, can come up with a better idea of leaving vacant structures in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Antonazzi?
Good evening. My public comments tonight will be on all three discussion items and all five action items. Starting with discussion item A, I would like to thank the superintendent in advance for her budget update tonight and the updates you provided the county commissioners last Monday. I can only imagine the difficulty getting honest answers from the executive cabinet on the $46.1 million that was spent on. Even more difficult is crafting a convincing narrative of the overspending. That was clear from the two hours of public questioning you received from the county commissioners. I appreciate the superintendent's apology to the county commissioners and I appreciate the county commissioners filling the two hours with critical questions on the district's overspending. The tragic reality of the budget deficit is students will have less this year than last. Transportation to choice schools is gone, some schools will not have media coordinators, and fewer professionally trained teachers will lead classroom and education. The tragic reality is the budget deficit was preventable. Even if one of the nine elected school board members questioned the executive cabinet's decisions and demanded answers, like the county commissioners did, we would likely be in a better place. But no one stepped up. To this day, not one board member is stepping up. It's sad. Let's look at the rest of tonight's agenda and you'll get the point. Discussion Item B is the Board's letter to state legislators. Despite the Board knew back in April that state auditors were investigating the district's finances, it's taken three months to write this letter. What is in this letter that Chair Kaplan will present to her fellow board this meeting? I don't know. The letter wasn't even posted one hour since this meeting started. It's still not posted. Discussion Item C, this is not the rubric of superintendent's qualifications. This is the rubric of a company that will find the next superintendent. Company applications to the RFP were due on July 11. The approval of this RFP will be considered by the full board 18 days after the fact. There is no contract cost mentioned, nor where the funds will come from to execute the superintendent's search. At a time where rigor and transparency are so important, these are the most incomplete and vague minutes I have read to date. That's action items DNA. The June 10 minute stated I had a few corrections which were noted. Noted? Details matter. The specific correction I stated was the Board Chair and former superintendent approved the Brown Fields Agreement without prior board approval. I was told at that meeting the minutes would be updated with that correction, and it was not. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to discussion items, we have three items tonight. First, Catty Moore, our interim superintendent, will give us a budget update.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan and board members of the community. As has become my regular cadence, and giving you updates on where we are. Some of the information that I'm sharing tonight is updates also shared with the commissioners earlier, just bringing full circle to the multiple audiences that listen to different things and may not have heard that, but will hear this, as well as additional information that we have for this evening. So first, a shorter slide on the fiscal year 2425 budget deficit in the way of an update as we are closing that year out. Our overall budget deficit at this point is now at 46.1. And I think that the couple of things that we are looking at here is that there were invoices received late in May and June that were after, we had worked with Hill Associates that had revised the number upward from some other numbers that had been put out earlier to 42. But there have been additional invoices that have been received late May, June, that added to the original 42 million. There are also additional invoices that are received after June 30. They can't be processed till after June 30 when they get here. We're reserving about 2 million for that, and between that and about 2 million for the other, we're up to 46.1. And this is, you know, I call this carryforward purchase orders. I think staff here calls it month 13. I think month 13 is a sort of a standard accounting practice where, because you cannot close the books out on the 30th, because some things may have been ordered or paid for but not delivered, or the invoice comes in after. In accounting, there is a month 13 that we in the district hold open for July and August for all of those things that might come in after June 30 that are actually prior year expenditures. One difficulty that we will see, this will be a yearly occurrence. It will happen every year. It happens in every district in this state. I think one of the things that is more difficult for us as a district this year with month 13 is that expenditures that come into that month 13 that are coded for the year before can usually be paid for with savings from within the prior school year that have not yet been reconciled to the annual comprehensive budget report that comes out in late fall. But we have no carryover this year, no additional funds from within the year to do that. So that's a complication for us. And it's on the books for this year's, on the books anyway, for this year's money. Normally, you'd be able to pay it with savings from the prior year. And then any savings beyond what you have to pay is what rolls to fund balance. All, I keep saying this, all vendor payments received and processed prior to June 30 have been paid. We've started seeing, I don't know if it was the Fourth of July holiday, delay in mail, but we're starting to see those cashed. We did have a hiccup with some that got returned and we had to reissue them and send them again. But please contact us if you believe you are in this and you have not been paid. I can tell you that we ran into one that had not been paid, and we didn't have a PO for it, for the prior year. So, you know, we still are finding those kinds of things, which is why I've left that 46.1 open. The three big vendor payments are still due. That's a total of 16.1. It includes our substitute management system, SSC, which is a custodial services company, and Forsyth County for the SROs and nurses. So that is still outstanding. A little update on payroll and the IRS and federal withholding. We have spoken to a human at the IRS office. Folks, that is progress. And we have, the person that we have communicated with has received the additional documents that were not submitted over the last, I think it went back to '23 or '22 maybe even, and additional documents they had not received, and we have resubmitted some information that was received. They are in receipt of that. We've talked to them on the phone. They have it. They see the payments that we've made that haven't been credited the way they were supposed to have been. So now there is some final reconciliation that needs to happen. We are confident that the payments that needed to be made have been made. We are not confident that they were made on time. So we will, we will deal with that if there are penalties or interest that has accrued when we get a final reconciliation error. But there is progress. Next slide, please. Turning to 2526. So we have opened our budgets for the school year. We asked our departments to review non-personnel costs to identify additional savings. Our new system, Tyler, has been loaded for the different funds that you see there. We opened for business on July 21. We do think it's important to know that they do have access, departments do have access right now to their non-personnel budgets for some purchasing spending. But we did release these budgets. So we have the entire budget that they requested that is available loaded in the system. But we have only released 50 to 100% of the funds, depending on the category. Some things, you don't spend everything at the beginning of the year to begin with. Sometimes you do have some payments that are all due at the beginning of the year. So that's why you see a variance of 50 to 100%, depending on what the budget line item is. Next slide. As a reminder, the state has not adopted a budget for fiscal year 2526, and we are still working on our continuing budget resolution. The continuing budget resolution means that there are changes that have occurred to federal allocations, state allocations, from what we were preview loaded in late spring, April, May-ish. So, for example, we have already, as of right now, received some reductions and adjustments to state resources. And we're going to need to adjust those allotments. Because they also are working under the guidelines of the continuing budget. You know, more information than you need. The way that they allotted positions was on the best of month PMR 1 or 2 for the beginning of the year last year. But what they are having to adjust to is the lower of PMR 1 or 2 based on how the continuing budget works. So there are reductions down in the allocations that were provided for planning budgets at the end of April, beginning of May. We are also monitoring our federal allotments. We are happy that the funds for Title II, III, and IV have been released. But for Title I, II, III, and IV, for all of our federal programs, the carryover that we normally have from one year to the next, because our federal programs do allow for carryover, so that you can use the funds from the prior year to begin the next school year. Our carryover has been greatly reduced in our federal allotments because as we closed out last year and did the work to move stuff around in order to make the deficit as low as possible, we used part of that federal carryover. So our federal carryover is reduced. And that is, it's about $8 million that it's reduced by. So we'll have to deal with that moving forward. So as a result, we are further reviewing our local funds that we have available, and we may need to make some further reductions in local expenditures as well. Staff is working on all of these now. I do anticipate that we might need to ask the Board for a special call meeting between now and August 12 to talk more about what this looks like. Not really sure yet. But certainly by August 12, we need to have better information. And if we need to make any decisions about anything with our current budget and changes for the next year, we will want to bring that forth as soon as possible. And then again, we've engaged an audit firm that is scheduled to deliver our annual comprehensive financial review in the late fall. October would be great. November is okay. December is not ideal, but still will work. But before the end of December 2025. Next slide, please. A word on fiscal accountability. This comes really from the presentation to the commissioners. There's been a lot of questions about this. The NC Auditor's Office, they did, they are conducting an investigative audit of our school financial systems, decision-making, accountability measures. We've provided a tremendous amount of data and access to all of our systems so that they can gather things on their own and see what has been happening. We do expect that the audit report will have findings and recommendations, and that these findings will be around guidance, that we, that, things that we need to change, things that we need to improve upon, what we did that was incorrect or wrong, and how, and recommendations for how we should address it. As a part of that, we also include that if there are individuals or systems or specific things that need to be called out, that they will, they will do that as a part of the audit findings so that we can respond to that as well. The final report that will be public will include a district response. They will share the findings with us. They will share a draft report with us. We will then provide responses to that. And they, the Office of the State Auditor, will be responsible for releasing that final report to the public. We have asked that they let us know what their cadence and timing around that would be so that we are prepared to release our own statement about it and be prepared for the questions that we're going to get about it as well. There are some requests for local and state support that are hanging out there or getting ready to be discussed later this evening. So the first one is our communication and advocacy with our county commissioners, referencing the meeting last week. We have requested that the county commissioners provide flexibility in the use of unspent, undesigned capital outlay, which is 3.8 million. One of the commissioner's questions really was very direct around, isn't there an opportunity cost in redirecting these funds to the deficit from last year? And the answer is yes. There are things that we won't be able to do that would otherwise, these capital outlay funds would be used for. But we have the flexibility and we have the dollars, because they've not been designated for a specific project at this time. And the more pressing need is that we look at the deficit from last year. We've also requested an additional allocation in local funds of 4.7 million. This really has to do with bond interest earnings and how those are handled. They are dollars that would be available to the district, but the commissioners hold these and could allocate them to us. I think one of the things that's really important from the presentation at the commissioner's agenda briefing last Monday, that the county manager reiterated to the commissioners that providing the flexibility for this $8.5 million does not impact any citizens' taxes, and it does not impact the commissioner's fund balance. So those are good things in terms of us looking to request the reallocation and then the one time of the 4.7. The commissioners did defer action on this request to their August 14 meeting. I will appear before them again on August 11. There were a couple of things in the agenda that we did not get to in the presentation. I'm thankful that they thought two hours was long enough and went on to the rest of their meeting. But it doesn't mean that I will return on August 11 to cover the things in the agenda that were not covered, in the presentation that weren't covered that day, which include Article 46 and how we're handling our budget for the school year moving forward. So see them on the 11th. And they will consider our request on the 14th. We also have some communication and advocacy with DPI and the State Board of Education. We are projecting a budget shortfall specifically in state allocated funds in the amount of 13.7 million. We have not yet received a bill or communication from DPI on this. We've been reporting on this. You may recall it, that we reported it as potentially an $18 million deficit in staffing, and it's, it looks like it'll be 13.7, which is also good. State Board policy does, they do have a policy that states that there is a penalty that can be imposed of 1% per month on the amount of the funds overspent by the district. So if we overspent by 13.7 million, the monthly interest on not paying that back is $137,000 per month. So as a part of that, knowing that that is a policy, not a legislated law, but a policy, we did send a letter to the State Board on Friday, July 18. And we have proactively, sort of preemptively, requested that they waive the application of the policy and the interest at 1% to waive that penalty once the final amount due is determined, so that we obviously will pay back what we owe. But because the interest is not required by the legislation, it is part of their board policy. They can set aside their board policy. I'm sure the State Board, they have indicated that they have received the letter. They will need to take up our request at a future State Board meeting. I think this might be my last slide for the evening and leads into our next conversation. So we are also looking at some communication and advocacy with the North Carolina Legislature. Our school board chair has communicated with all of the local delegation members at some point or another in the past couple of months. We have some other school board members that have spoken to legislators as well. We have discussed what it might look like to request support from the General Assembly to address the budget deficit from 2425. And we, the superintendent and I, met in person with at least one member of the local delegation to discuss this. And what is clear is that the legislature is not going to ask on a request that they have not received. is clear is that the legislature is not going to ask on a request that they have not received. So, we need to formalize a request, and this evening, the board will discuss and vote on a decision to send a letter to our legislators requesting assistance with the budget shortfall from '24, '25. And then, we will sort of discuss, I guess, what we want in that letter, the kinds of things that we need to see, and we will get that drafted and then get sent to our legislators, should the board approve to move forward with that. Any questions? I think that's my last slide, right?
Yes.
Any questions?
Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. So, to that point, moving on to the discussion of the letter to the legislators, as you all are all aware, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education is not a taxing authority, and to that point, we have three sources of revenue. We have the county, state, and federal. We have made a formal request to the commissioners for 8.5 million, which was discussed, that we are hoping to get approval at their next Board of Commissioner meetings. We also need to request financial assistance from our state legislatures. And after conversations with our local legislative delegation, it was made very clear that we need to have a formal ask for the needed funds in the form of a letter. So, we're voting tonight to approve a letter to the legislators, and since board members this evening have reviewed the content of the draft letter, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any comments or questions after reviewing the letter? Yes, Board Member Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the timing? Cadence, I guess, to use the superintendent's term. What is the timing of, as to when this will be accomplished and when it'll go forward, and to whom it will be addressed?
It'll be addressed to Representative Lambeth, who was the head of our local delegation. And timing-wise, depending on whether we vote on this or not, I think the sooner the better, since they are back in session now. Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
I think, I think Board Member Brown Gaither was before me. I'll defer to her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this is something we can answer, but I know it's come from the public. What was our delay in saying that we needed to do a letter?
So, I, if you...
Go ahead.
So, I'll speak to that, and I'll let Chair Kaplan kind of fill in the details. So, my understanding, if you all remember, when we first were kind of made aware that there were issues, we, we first reached out and, and we met with a group of people, and those individuals included representatives from the Department of Public Instruction, the Chair and Vice Chair of the State Board of Education, the Chair and Vice Chair of our local county commission, as well as Chair Kaplan and myself. And then, one of those meetings, our interim superintendent attended, as well as our outgoing superintendent, and we discussed kind of what the, what, what the recommendations were in terms of where we needed to move, where we needed to go. And so, what you all have seen is at first, we went to our county commission. They responded and said that they didn't, you know, they couldn't feasibly provide us with the money that's necessary. And then, Chair Kaplan started having discussions with members of our state legislative delegation, but it wasn't until recently, within the past maybe couple of weeks, that there was a consensus from that, that group around how we needed to make an ask. And so, as soon as we got that consensus, that's why you see this on your agenda, and then I'll let Superintendent Moore or, or Chair Kaplan kind of chime in.
Yes, go ahead.
I think one piece that I would add is, I'm, I'm not sure that initially, anyway, in conversations with legislators of the local delegation, that there was agreement amongst the members of the local delegation about how to move forward with something like this. But I think, but I do think, and as I said in my update, that it, there's no way the legislature can, can consider a request they don't have. So, we have to make the request. And I think that, and, and in our meeting with our one-on-one, it was made clear, you're going to have to request this in writing.
Right, exactly, because of the amount of money. But, but certainly had conversations with all of our local delegation, and I know that they know that we, we were, we have a need and we had a request. We were also trying to determine what that request would be. And so, we were waiting to get all the invoices in, all the savings that we could, we could come together, but in the end, as the superintendent just mentioned, it, it was made very clear to us that you are going to need to, that we will need to, to request specifically in a letter what we need. So, they are in session now, and I think the sooner the better. We are trying to make some plans to meet with them in person. I have been having some conversations back and forth with Representative Lambeth about that and have reached out to his assistant, and we are trying to coordinate that. I know it's a busy time for the legislatures. I'd like for it to be in August, but it could be a little bit later, but we are working on getting that part accomplished so that we can have a conversation face-to-face as a board with our local delegation. And we certainly appreciate their support and, yeah, so, looking forward to it. Yes.
I just, I just want to thank you, and I want to say, because I know public has been asking, they seem to think that the board is just sitting back, waiting, 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 and not doing anything.
No, that's not true.
And that's why I asked the question, to make sure that the public understands there is a process and a method, and we are doing it by the process and the method. And I want to thank both our board chair and our vice chair and our superintendent for taking on the lead with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our third discussion items. Deion Jenkins, our chief legal counsel, will discuss the superintendent search firm rubric scoring criteria.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the board, and Superintendent Moore. I just have a few brief slides for you tonight, and then I'll turn the floor to you all to discuss what you'd like to see as a part of the superintendent search firm rubric. First, I just want to briefly recap the timeline. Obviously, once an interim superintendent was appointed, the next action this board did was to approve sending out an official RFP. Those responses were submitted July 11th, and ultimately, tonight, you are discussing what scoring criteria you would like to use to evaluate those. To the point made by the, the individual at public comment, Mr. Antonazzi, this is not the night that you would establish your rubric for the superintendent. Once you hire a search firm, they will assist you in developing that vacancy announcement and selecting what criteria you want to see in your next superintendent. So, that is definitely to come in the future. And then, ultimately, the plan is, as of now, of course, this is subject to change, that at the next board meeting in August, you would vote on which search firm you would like to enter your contract with. This is just an overview of the different sections that were part of the RFP. I won't go through that in detail. You do have a copy of that, just to refresh your memory in the materials tonight, and as well as generally speaking, the criteria that you referenced in the RFP that you would use to evaluate the candidates. But as far as the scoring criteria tonight, I think I wanted to, in, in an effort to try to open the conversation and discussion amongst the board, I posed these three questions for you to consider as you're narrowing down your scoring criteria. What cri, what qualities, excuse me, do you want in a superintendent search firm? Ultimately, what outcomes are you expecting from this search firm and by when? And then, are there any other factors that might help inform your selection criteria? Here are a few just suggestions or recommendations. These are just kind of food for thought. You might want to consider some sort of criteria around experience with similar, with searches in similar-sized districts. That was something that you shared at the last meeting that we were really, really interested in, and was actually part of the RFP. Experience with other searches in North Carolina. Obviously, North Carolina is unique, and so, that might be something that is important to you. Adequacy of resources in conducting the search, clarity in their proposal materials, as well as demonstrated understanding of the needs of our district, resume or other information describing the team that would be involved with this search and what experiences they have, compliance, obviously, with our proposal submission requirements, and ultimately, the cost. But this is not an exhaustive list. This is just some things that I'm submitting for you to consider. You also can consider doing your rubric in a number of different ways. You could do a numerical scale, and there's actually a sample in your materials as well that you could pull up that is a simple 100-point scale, and they've assigned different points to different factors. Or you can do some sort of a rating scale, like the example I have here, which is similar to how we might evaluate, you know, personnel in our district as like a one, two, three, or four, as far as meets our expectations, exceeds them, partially meets them, or does not meet our expectations or requirements. An example of a point scale might look something like this. So, you have a criteria, a description of what you're looking for, and then you have a maximum number of points that that entity can gain in that particular area. And this is just a snippet example. You could have, you know, 100 points total and multiple different criteria listed there. But there are examples of rubrics using both the rating as well as the point system in your materials tonight for you to consider. And so, with that, I will tender the floor to you all to begin your discussion about what you'd like to see.
Board Member Miller.
Yes, I realize that we want to have hire someone that has done a search, has experience in the state of North Carolina, but is this going to be a national search?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it, we would, and that's something you could specify in your criteria as well, is demonstrated ability to conduct a national search.
Okay.
But even if it's a North Carolina, if, even if they have experience in North Carolina, they typically do broaden their net out nationally.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a question. I really appreciate the point scoring method because it allows a little more, just concise what we like, what we don't. You know, it has a little more information versus doing the points. That's just my opinion as we discuss what we prefer. I think doing the point system with the one through four, like the example, may help it be a little more concise for us.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So, I'm, I'm probably partial to the, the, I'm, I'm looking at your example, the rating, like the, the kind of rating example, yeah, that one. But I, I really would like, and this, this is, this is, this might be a little daunting, but so, I wanted to be clear that like, to use Board Member Miller's kind of suggested criteria. If the example would be experience with conducting similar, like searches, a four, I'd like for it to delineate like what a four means. So, a four would potentially be that the, the company has conducted, conducted, conducted national searches for superintendents versus a one would be they've only ever done kind of searches for smaller school districts or something like that. Like, I'd like for those things to be defined so that, you know, board members are not necessarily putting a four. I'm not, I'm not saying anybody would do this. I'm just saying where the, you put a four because you liked the way a paragraph was written, because it's not as defined as kind of what, what a four means and what a one means. And so, I think whatever the criteria is that we decide, which I, I think some of the things that you put in here, like obviously, cost should be one, compliance with all of our RFP processes should be one, whether or not they were responsive in that aspect. I think Board Member Miller's point, like obviously, experience with conducting, in my opinion, national searches, but also searches for large school districts is a, is a, is like, or just, yeah, that...
Can we flip back to the requirement sheet?
Which, which one? To the requirement sheet?
Is, is this the one you're talking about?
Is that what you're looking at?
I was referring to what Board Member Bohannon was talking about, the cost, like that...
The criteria, the, the scoring. I don't know that that's on the...
That's a separate thing.
That's, that's a separate. It's a separate. It's not on this. It's on the slide.
Oh, it was, Deion, where, you had the one through four, the one through four.
Oh, that, okay, okay. I thought you were talking about the whole...
That right there?
Separate, okay.
Nope, okay.
This one?
Go back, keep going back, Deion.
That one? This one?
Okay.
Okay.
Board Member Bohannon was referring to these, so I thought it would be helpful to have them talk if he refers to them.
Yep.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
Coming from a teacher's point of view, I guess I like better the evaluation rubric, where we have the 100 points, because when it gets down to the one where you have the one through four, it gets a little bit more difficult because you have not kind of narrowed down. If we have a tie or whatever the case is, it's hard to decipher at that point. But then, when we have the 100-point scale, I think it gets a little bit more in-depth, and we can look and we can kind of judge which one is next or which one's tied, or whatever the case is. The other one, I think, is a little bit more difficult to discern at.
I, I do think it might be a little bit more difficult under the rating scale if cost is your factor to determine what's a one, two, three, or four under cost. Just as an example.
Any other thoughts on which scale with other board members?
So, I, I have a question. So, we've already gotten proposals in.
Yes.
The proposals were submitted based off of the criteria we included when we first had the discussion earlier.
Yes.
So, then, the evaluation criteria of the proposal should really match that.
So, this is, this is what was in the RFP verbatim. It's drafted very generically to, you know, to allow you some flexibility as you're reviewing them, but, you know, it said included but not limited to the following kind of factors. And so, you can base your criteria off of this. You can add additional criteria that you'd like to see, but this is probably a good place to start as far as formulating your overall scoring criteria.
If we added additional criteria and, and the, the information to score the criteria isn't included in the proposal that they submitted, then how does that work?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
So, we, we designed the RFP based off of criteria that we discussed as a board, and the respondents have submitted RFPs based off of that.
Yes.
If we change the scoring criteria to deviate, like let's say we put all these things in it, but then we added more, that, that the proposals themselves don't necessarily show, like I don't know what an example would be, but if we added some criteria that the proposals as submitted doesn't answer, what then do we do?
I think what you would see is that all of the proposals probably would rate very low in that area, so it ultimately might, might not make a difference in the long run.
Right.
But, but, you know, your point is definitely a valid one, that if you add something that they didn't necessarily anticipate, it might not be included in the proposal.
So, then, to that point, it would seem to me that we stick with these, right?
I think these are a really good starting point, unless there's some other factor that you all feel very strongly about, that you'd like for them to be evaluated on. Now, what is not in here, but is, is kind of assumed as a part of the RFP, is information about the qualifications of the team that will be working. That's something they are required to submit, although it wasn't listed here on the selection criteria. That is something that you can add as a part of your rubric, that they should have provided to you because it was a required element of the RFP. So, that's, that's an addition, that's an example of something you can add that should be in every single submission.
Okay. Board Member Wood.
Thank you, ma'am. Since we're all highly sensitive to budgetary matters these days, do you have a range based on past experience of what districts of similar size, a range of the, the cost of services of such entities?
So, I, I can tell you that the last time the board went through a superintendent search and used an external firm, and they used the North Carolina School Board Association, the range for that was approximately $30,000. Depending on, we've, we've only ever worked with the North Carolina School Board Association, so I'm not, and I don't want to obviously reveal too much about the submissions that have been turned in, but I think in other districts, they've probably been comparable, depending on using other firms. Some firms use a percentage of the salary structure kind of format, and then some just say, here's our fee for services.
So, I, I'd be comfortable adding, Deion, the, the criteria about the qualification of the staff. I think that's, that's beneficial. So, it would be the six that are on this screen and then that seventh one?
Okay.
And then, I, I guess, so then, what about the question about what, which one to use? And Board Member Brown Gaither, you said you wanted, you liked the...
The 100 or the...
The 100-point scale.
Qualifications is actually a part of that. Qualification is a part of it.
So, like, in the example that I have, this is just an example of what it could look like. And the points here are all made up. So, you can assign whatever point value you'd like to see based on what you feel is most important in your...
Do, do you have a recommendation as to which? Because I, I'm in agreement with Board Member Brown Gaither about, I think this is, this looks good to me, but... looks good to me, but do you have a recommendation?
As far as the point value to assign to each criteria?
Well, if we're going to win the 100, or are we going to do that?
I mean, I think that the, this example here is probably the easiest, because it allows us to create a more clear description of what you're looking for, and it allows each individual Board member, as you're scoring the search firms yourself, more flexibility in how many points you assign to them, based on your review. I think some of the factors would be a little bit challenging to try to define on a rating scale of a 1.2, you know, 1, 2, 3, or 4. This way, you just have points that you assign, and you assign them in accordance with your review.
Okay.
But I wanted to at least show you the multiple options.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, I like, I like this system better, mainly because if you look at those seven different things, they all don't need to be weighted equally, and this gives us the ability to differentiate them, you know, by making their max points different values.
Yeah. So are there any particular factors of these six, plus the one additional for the qualifications of the team, that you would like to be weighted the heaviest? Any one or two?
I feel very strongly about them having experience with large Superintendent's searches, large district Superintendent's searches.
I would say 1 and 3. Well, they're not numbered, but yeah.
And I guess, maybe I'm a little different. I also see number 4, bullet 4, clarity, understanding of the needs of our district is very important.
Yes. And I'll just go ahead and say it, you know, cost is important. I think it's gonna need to be...
Cost is very important.
Yeah. Big factor.
Okay. And so what I can do is prepare the rubric, based on what you've said, as far as prioritizing these four factors, and figure out how to make it all fit within 100 points, and I'll send that out to you. If you're good with it, then that's what you could use to evaluate these search firm proposals between now and the next Board meeting.
Okay. We'll vote on it shortly.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
So we are moving on to our action items. We have five to consider. First, consider approval to send the letter to the legislators. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Coon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Superintendent's search firm rubric, scoring criteria. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, I have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the contract with Communication Access Partners. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Yes?
Just for clarification as to... Just as clarification as to expressing the need for this particular contract and the amount of $90,000, please. Just a kind of update, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Moore?
So if I recall, and Chris can step up if he'd like, in case I don't get it correctly, this is for deaf heart of hearing for staff, and normally, it is tagged on to the overall contract for special education services, when it comes with their larger amount, but we, and I can't remember the reason we had to split it out, but we had to split it out this year. And so it's a standard contract that comes every year, it's for staff who require these services, not for students.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm sorry. You're in favor?
Okay, motion passes unanimously, then. Next, consider approval of the June 10th, 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
To the public comment, was the adjustments made to the minutes?
At that last meeting, this one, I recall, and I'm happy to give this to him again, I spoke with him afterwards and say... Can you, can you tell me again what corrections needed to be made? And he said he would send it to me, and I never received them.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the June 24th, 2025 Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that also passes unanimously. So our next regular meeting will be August 12th, 2025, and this is going to conclude our open meeting, but before we adjourn, I want to remind the public not to approach the deus after the meeting ends. If you need to speak with a Board member or the Superintendent, please wait for them to come down in the auditorium. You can also email any Board member or the Superintendent if you have a concern. Thank you for being with us. Check our website for a complete list of upcoming meetings and other public meetings. So do I have a motion to go back into closed, to discuss a personal matter and a legal matter pursuant to the statutory provisions listed on the agenda?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, and I have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
No, we're not.
Thank you, we are now enclosed.